So I'm gonna call the order, the meeting of the White Lake. Chip Library for the board of directors for the month of March. And like that six fifty P M. So. I don't know, we've been doing that for over a year and I still forget it.
You have two copies of them, so I don't think.
I'm pledging an entrance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Not here.
Then do you want?
President.
Here.
Vice President.
Here.
President.
Here.
Secretary. And you come to me back in there.
Here.
Stephen Longberry.
Brother.
Director April Stevenson and Assistant Director Neil Roger, I'll come in.
Okay. So can someone approve the agenda as presented?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
A second of motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five yes votes. And then we do have public tonight. If you would like, are you here to make an announcement? Okay, come on up. Just identify yourself and your address.
I'm Karen Porcas, I'm eighty-six forty-eight Rosario Court, White Lake, four eight-three eight-six.
Okay.
Okay, my comment is, we're getting some questions regarding the overhang to the library, you know, that didn't get put out a couple years ago, especially with the beautiful posters of what the new buildings will look like, and they all have overhangs.
Uh huh.
Is this part of our plan to put it up eventually?
It was originally our plan to do that. When we went out and got pricing to do that, it was actually more than twice what the original price was, even though we laid the footers when we had the equipment out here to do it, thinking that would help decrease the price. The price of all the materials plus it being another, gosh, almost three years when we did that. And the price of time and the cost of things over time, it was so much more than what we thought it was going to be, that we kind of weren't able to do that.
Do you remember what the price was?
It was over two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And it was originally like a hundred and twenty.
So there's no plans in the future to do this?
It would either be a, a, a large donation by a particular, you know, person, like that nice donation we got from somebody when they, when they passed their estate, passed the money on to us, and we were able to do a number of things at that time. But we didn't have enough to do that alone. And we took that money and broke it up over other projects. The other thing we could do is a fundraising project. But two and twenty-five thousand dollars is a lot to to raise, and that's if things haven't changed a whole lot in the last two years, which is very possible to have.
Is that one of the things that, because of?
Yeah, because of the township.
Because what we did for the township, the requirement that we ran the water down for them.
Yeah.
That was one of the things that was removed from what was gonna happen at the library. We ended up having to reduce square footage. And.
Remove them.
It, it's called a protocol, I believe.
Hmm.
That's all.
Yeah. I mean, it would be very nice to have.
Have that, especially on bad weather, but it was, it's a, it's a large fundraising opportunity. We'll just see when.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Well, you're welcome. Thanks for offering to ask us. All right. So now we have approval of minutes. Last meeting.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of the White Lake Library Board of Trustees from February twenty-six, twenty-twenty-five.
I'll second.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Five yes votes. All right, so now that brings us to officer reports. And I don't have anything in particular to report to. Eric.
I do not have anything to report at this time.
Okay. And. I have a number of questions, okay? So that brings us to you, John.
Okay. I'll offer everybody an opportunity to look at the balance sheet. And I'd like to go over briefly, if. Check. Are you ready?
Which, I'm sorry.
I'm gonna do the treasure.
Yes, please do, sorry.
Okay, so on the second page, if anybody has a question on the balance sheet, just let me know. On the second page, you're gonna see our investment summary. In federal, and if you will look at the beginning of that, we, it looks like we have four Flagstar CDs for eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. We actually have three of those, or what they call reciprocal CDs. So they're not actually, they're managed through Flagstar, but they're not held at that bank, so we're within our federal guidelines of per F C. Okay, so one of them is already matured and has, has loaded them, went into the checking account for future use. And then we have two others that will mature in May, that they will also go into the checking account, one that matures next September. Um. There's another note on here, we had a two hundred thousand dollar CD from Lake Michigan, and we took the balance of the interest, and we put that into flat, the Flagstar checking account, and then we rolled over two hundred thousand dollars. And, and that's for a twelve months period. We have another CD that's coming due, and we'll talk about that. I'll ask for a motion when we go through the finance committee. So, does anybody have any questions on CDs? Okay, and if no one has any other questions on on our revenue state, one of the things that we wanted, that we were talking about in finance community that I wanted to bring up is how much money that we're already making on computer services, no, I'm sorry. On, on, on rentals. So we've just started really working on room bookings, and as you can see, for our room bookings, we're already way over. So if we continue on this path and on our interest on our CDs, we'll will be exceeding our anticipated revenue for those this year. And.
When can I?
Yes.
Or, or so, can you project out what that maybe that might exceed?
Um.
If it's trends the same way?
What do you think, April? Yes.
It's going pretty well. So if you're at for two and a half months and that's two thousand, so if you call it a thousand a month, I mean, that could be twenty-two thousand.
And you would estimate a projected originally, how much?
Fifteen hundred.
Yeah.
So you. And we've already, and our actual is already.
Three hundred and fifty percent of all.
Right, for sure. Yes, so it's really catching on that we have this opportunity for people to book rooms, and so especially rooms like this. And they can rent half this room or the whole room, and so it's catching on in the community, it's working out.
Right, and I've noticed that the prices like change from a few years back.
Policy can be much more user-friendly, if you will. More in line with what other.
Well, that's awesome news.
Yes, it's great. So if there isn't any other questions on the finances or on the or any financial statements, I can make a motion to accept the bills for payment as presented.
I'll make, I'll move the accepting orders presented.
Okay, all in favor?
Second. Oh, yeah, second.
I'll second it.
Okay. Wait, you made it.
I made it.
You made it, so you're second.
Yeah, I have a second. Okay, thank you.
Now all in favor?
Okay.
All five yes votes. Are you ready, statement? Okay.
So it's a little bit of a lighter month. I did take a vacation on. Ready to go back, what we've been on, what we should start, that whole day of active vacation. So administration-wise, we did hold our annual tornado drill in conjunction with Oakland County, and that went well. We did finalize, put out the family report, as well as create a video to go with it. Big thank you to Emily for working on that video for us. But we're, we're quite happy with the annual report this year, and I hope all of you are as well. Circulation services, we issued seventy new library cards to Dublin Elementary students, so that was exciting.
All my.
New hires, we, we replaced the clerk, and then, as you approved, and the budget for this year, there was a new part-time clerk position, and we finally were able to fill that one. The, that new one is filled by a long-time resident and library user, so we really wanted to work there and got brought.
And you are.
Excellent.
Great thing to do, so both of those are working out very well. Communications and marketing is going, going, going as well. It's going along great. We did get two five-star Google reviews. One was just a, was a five-star, we thanked them for that, and the other one was comments, went in to use the computer and printer, got in and out quick. They kind of wrote that quickly, so great, great, great comment there, so, but thank them for taking the time to actually go on and give us a nice five-star. Director connections, it's just real basic, you know, the board committee, you know, I'm there, you're with me. Was like a few times, it did that sometimes, please, and a couple of webinars. Much needed, because we had to learn about the new effects of the earned sick time, so that was all said. So these, we did hire the, picked and hired the window washer. We have, so we're very excited about that. It's a White Lake business and White Lake resident. And not only that, but because they have to bring in the scissor lift for the interior bank of windows, we did get a small separate goal for them to do the clean out the bugs from the chandeliers, so yay.
Yes.
Uh. Great. Such a great way to add that. And we're actually gonna do that, that's gonna take place primarily on the Sunday and Monday of, in service day, so it will not affect our patients. We can have that here while staff are here, but we wanted to eliminate that and we've closed down.
And Wednesday and service day for patients, it's Monday, same deadline.
So, and to our wonderful friends, they earned over sixty-three hundred dollars at their March book sale.
Yay. Thank you. Fabulous, fabulous.
This also had the bake sale added, which was some wonderful, wonderful bake sale. That was great, great work, great work. Outreach, I, though I've recovered, like I said, went to those Dublin Elementary Junior Department and kindergarten classes, so we had them all here. So I got the opportunity to help Emily and get back to my new service librarian time, and that was just fabulous. We did tours, we did storytime, and all these little, we ones got their little library cards, if they didn't have them already. So that was fantastic. You can see they're all, they got their little color-coded little shirts on, it was just super cute. Emily did a great job of her story of mine, and they were fantastic, so great to see.
Quick dumb question. You said we did seventy library cards at Dublin Elementary, and there were seventy-three kids in classrooms. Did that mean only three of them had elementary, had library cards?
I don't know, there might have been a little bit here and there.
Were there an overlap, yeah?
Um. Maria attended the Bay's Community Chamber member orientation process hosted in Peninsular Village, because Maria is our one that covers the book stuff and at the Dublin Junior Center. I'm on her, maybe, or in the Peninsular Village, and this was a great opportunity. Our staff are doing logical question development, and see a lot of these webinars later, keeping up with all of their things that they need to learn and know. We hosted, you know that we do have Freedom Works and New Horizons, Adult Social News Group, that regularly, we're working with them this week, and we did film them for a Friday film. We gave out a hundred and sixty bingo sheets for the winter reading challenge. Emily and in her group went to Nova High School for their career expo, gets lots of interesting volunteering here at the library. And then we also had two banks, Lake Michigan Credit Union and Flagstar staff came out to read for our storytimes as guest readers, so we were really happy to get that nailed down. Excited about that, so some exciting staff anniversaries. Congratulations to Amy.
All right.
And you can hit twenty-four.
Very nice, yay.
And Ms. Mallory is young, new, yet four years.
That's a great job.
Technology and website, so we, we had an uninterrupted power supply that kind of died, and so we got that replaced. And we, as part of our friends' contribution list, we got an additional RFID scanning pad, one of those circle disc ones, which makes our back tech services area much more efficient, so it was another nice thing to get. And we also added a tablet that we have Carl Connect on, amongst other things, and that too is helping to make our circulation staff more efficient and more. Again, as I was saying, thank you two months, thank you three months, so thank you for the wonderful staff, I'm all leaving. Um. Civic were going well, regulation, it was the second highest in February and the best in August, what I hear. So before, and every time I'm sitting here, I'm. Wow. Um, new card registration still doing well, second highest since July, not since February. Door count, also doing well, that time we like holding. And that was for February, so we see all the March bill that we've been getting. Public computers as well, and Wi-Fi sessions. And. All going well, reference questions, highest of October and now February. Overdrive, down pad. So good, and Google. Uh. Well, here. First side is steady. And our team, but our.
I have a question for you. So. What's the difference? To log in, plus Wi-Fi, and then the Wi-Fi sessions?
So Wi-Fi itself is just, Wi-Fi is separated out.
Okay.
Public computers are, the public computers plus Wi-Fi is Wi-Fi plus the public computer station.
So what is considered a public computer?
Well, we have right up there and you.
So when I just logged in, what is, what is? So it hooks into the one, so I just contributed to that. Thank you.
Okay, that's it. All righty. So next we have our committee reports. The building committee is first. I don't have, you have that, William, you know that?
Okay. Okay, so our last meeting follow-up, donor tree update, according to the vendor, donor tree installation will be in the next few weeks, and so that was a couple weeks ago, so are we there?
So it was supposed to be, so he had reached out, he was about to get it in on, I believe, Wednesday before last, and then he reached out last minute because they didn't finish another job, and he would look for another time date to get us on schedule.
Did he have an estimate?
What I said on there, that's the change.
Next few weeks?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, uh, the twenty-twenty-five building committee goals. Investigate the change in service hours with strategic planning. They investigate the cost of H V A C items for rainy days, strategic funds. Uh, the investigate the cost of repairing walls and cracks. And I know that we kind of stumbled on that, I mean, has that gone any further?
So, that is not gonna be done until later in the spring. I know.
Okay. And so we investigated the cost of, well, we still gotta investigate the cost of the full carpet furniture cleaning. Uh, the window building cost, I mean, we've already taken care of that, right? You have that, so discuss that slightly. At our meeting, we basically talked mostly about the digital signage, and consumed most of it. Again, I apologize for being caught up in a work thing and getting to that late. Um. And then we have a third vendor that we procured and is developing a quote. Any other? If we hear back on that?
No, so he should have that quote soon, and then they're going to give a presentation at the next building committee meeting on Monday before.
Right, because we were hoping to maybe make a decision next month, right? And then the additional counter space and the idea that, so we have one quote from library design, and I think we discussed that quite a bit at the last board meeting here, we were gonna go with with what was the norm, what we already have, right?
So that's the board book. So.
Oh, that's just slightly different, okay.
Yeah, I can do a small locate on this one, so we do have the one quote, the counter space and the idea that from library design, working on the second quote. With this one, I ran into a little bit of a glitch, but, so it's kind of a little complicated, but I still, should still, just gonna take me a little longer to get it.
And I think that was it. One little thing that I can add that I've been working on from the very beginning was, I know we talked about a uh, maintenance schedule, stuff like that, so I just emailed April a few minutes ago, before the meeting started, uh, with some companies that provide software for that. So they're gonna reach back out to us, to me, and I'll forward it to you as it comes, but basically, it's a free service, and then they just send us people that are in that business.
Oh, okay.
I don't think, I don't think, talking to David, that we currently use a software. So, and this is for total build, total building maintenance and follow-up, so it sets up schedules and things you should look for, all of that, so I'm just kind of investigating it. See if we can.
Yeah.
Get some good, you know, a, a, a good program to follow. And that's it.
Who's gonna do finances, that you?
So the finance committee met three nineteen. We went over the twenty-twenty-five budget update, the final property tax revenue we're expecting to arrive in March. The property machine usage revenue was high, and room bookings are exceeding our expectations. We are hoping that that will increase through um, offer payments by credit. Um. For the twenty-twenty-four audit, everything is complete, we are just waiting to hear back when they'll be in, for in-person visit. For CD updates, our next CD is up April seventeenth at Genesis, and we would like to roll over the full amount.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, so do you want to do that now?
No, when you're done, I'll make that motion.
So we did want to roll over the full amount. Legacy sponsorships and donation tree levels are waiting to hear back on how many characters each league can have. And still churning the amounts for the legacy sponsorships. Um.
I have a question for April, do you think that we'll have both of those that we can discuss in April?
Both of the.
The.
Legacy sponsorship.
Number and for our finance committee and the, the Leafs. Okay. Okay, great.
The Leafs, we know, we're gonna set it two fifty plus.
Okay.
The base would be two fifty, it's just those legacy ones, it's just one one room that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I do. And then according to the vendor, we're expecting the installation to be in the next few weeks. Um, we did discuss our goals, um, we discussed more about forming a library foundation. Um, and I do have information of the next meeting to add to that, I did attend that, you know, so.
Great.
Meeting. And a lot of great information, and I heard from a number of different libraries that do have them and what that means.
Okay, good.
And then we also discussed credit card payments, reviewing credit card vendor comparison report, we narrowed it down to Stripe and Square. So we'll be looking further into which one would be best for the staff to use. Um, we do need to start exploring and defining the village options for necessary support, and we are recommending bringing back our old library director, Denise Stefanik.
Stefanik.
As a consultant for the village fragment, so she's done it in the past. And then our next, next meeting is Wednesday, April ninth.
Okay. All sounds good.
Okay, so we have a CD that's coming due in April, and it is at Genesis. At this time, looking at our finances, we don't need the cash at this time. Their adjust rate is their seven-month CD, so, and we currently have a seven-month CD, and that seven-month CD is, I think, four point four eight as of today. So when this, we're gonna roll that, we, I, we would like to roll it over, and it's a hundred and forty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars. Where the finance committee is recommending that we roll the entirety over, and we'll have it before the end of the year. Well, so that money will be available before the end of the year, and we won't leave it until then. So I am going to make a motion, I actually wrote it. So I want to make a motion to roll over the full amount of the April twenty-twenty-five maturing Genesis CD of a hundred and forty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars to a new seven-month Genesis CD.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Becky.
The ayes have it, five yes votes. And then we've got strategic planning.
And policy.
I'm sorry, yeah.
So the policy committee met, we talked about yet more edits to the E S T A policy, to the state legislative edits. Um, there, the suggested edits, I'll continue to pack it, but we're not gonna have a vote on it until the court, or until the attorney takes a look at them in detail, correct? Right. Um, you know, unless they're all in red are the edits that are in here, that's probably the big thing, just from my perspective to call out, certainly not all of them, but we removed the phrase about exempt employees and qualified employees, because they, everyone is qualified, because of that. And then there was also a change in the back that it's hard to spot it if you weren't looking for it, the last second, the last paragraph. It says, uh, re-employed at the library within two months, it was six months prior to that.
That's what the original earned sick time was gonna be, six months. So we're, we're just updating what we had already approved um, to the we think the final earned sick time.
There wasn't many changes from the attorneys.
There wasn't many changes from the attorney, so that was great.
Yes.
So the last copy was.
So just. For me is the last page was basically the attorney's blessing on the first two pages or not? Yes.
The first one, which. All of you approved, yeah.
Right.
And policy committee did that to fix it for the state, like later changes. Then that was sent to the attorney and the last one is the attorney.
So the attorney is really a combination of. What? Okay, thank you.
So with that in mind, do you want to vote in tonight or are we still waiting for something else April on this one? Okay. Then I would like to make a motion, uh, well, actually, I think it's the last, the only other thing we have is that the next meeting is on Tuesday, April first. Five P M via Zoom. Uh, now that we're done with that part though, before we move on to the next committee, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the earned sick time. Mutation in, sorry.
I'm sorry, this is supposed to. This doesn't, it doesn't. Doesn't match exactly what's on this.
Oh.
It shouldn't match the original. Because it misses.
That's what you just told William and Dan. That's why I'm asking.
No, I said plus with the mission, plus what changed.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is the version that we would.
So, just so I'm not confused now.
Well, I'm confused now.
Okay, so.
You're looking at is the attorney one.
Thank you.
Other two just to show you the full things in case you needed to see the original. Plus you wanted to see what the policy changes were from policy committee.
Or it's too sided. At least there's two sides of it.
And so this is the one that we worked on.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
So. With that in mind, I'll be. I've seen this one. This is one of the smaller print. Uh, with the, this, is it draft? It's not Marcus draft three, but it's the one with the attorney's notes in red on the bubble. Um, I'd like, like to make a motion that we accept the new um. Policy manual four point five earned sick time. With the edits suggested by the attorney contained in this.
I will second that motion.
Okay, okay.
Aye.
Three, four.
So discussion.
Well, we didn't ask that.
Yeah, we didn't ask that.
So. Cause you're just doing the top part here, right? And you're just approving the four point five. The motion was for four point five.
Four point five and containable, four point five dot one is also.
For all of us.
Right.
Okay, aye.
Okay, we have all yes votes. The last committee is the strategic planning committee. And we met. Uh. Karen. I don't know if everybody knows this, but Karen, who was a. Board member last year. Uh, and chose not to be a board member this year, um, is part of that committee. So we do have some help there. And we talked about everything that was a. It's a plan for year two. We had assigned people and dates on when those are targeted to be done. And uh, everybody's, looks like they're pretty much on track for what we're doing there. And uh, we're. As a group, we're addressing next one, we're. Were uh, heard during the um. Interviews and stuff with people, that people are looking to actually physically be in building more often. And have physical interaction with the collections and stuff more often. And um, so that's one of the things we're going to focus on in the June meeting. We've got some ideas on some surveys to send out. We talked a little bit about maybe having some limited hours that are almost like a self-serve. You know, where, where we had people in the building already, but they weren't interacting with the public. This way, you know, you could, if you could meet your girlfriend and you could bring your kids and she could bring her kids. And the kids could sit in the children's area, moms could use the area in there to sit and interact, have a coffee and talk while the kids play. Either before school started or, you know, something like that and think of other ways we could do that. Just if, so if you guys have any ideas on how to expand personal interaction with the building itself. That's the kind of stuff we're looking for input on before June. When we.
Okay.
We're looking outside of the current library hours then?
Yes.
Which requires more staff.
Not if they're here already doing other stuff. And uh, uh, the understanding is, is not time to interact with staff. It's a time to be in the building. We talked about maybe putting um, videos out on the website. Um, and other things. So people wouldn't, wouldn't come in with the understanding, oh, I can come in early and this librarian will help me. Find sources for my, my project. It would be like, I'm twelve years old and my mom homeschools me and I've got to write a report on this. Well, I can come in when there's not a lot of other kids here and do that myself. So we'd have to educate the consumers. So they would understand what it's there for. You know. Part of our strategic plan. We heard you loud and clear that you want to have more interaction with the building and the collection. And um, you know. We could look around to other libraries and develop a list of. Other people that have hours that are outside of our hours. That kind of stuff. Because really without more money, we're not going to get more people. And so we were trying to figure out, well, how can we get people in the building more often, but not have to pay?
Not increase staff.
So that's one of the things we're looking for. It's one of the ones they always say, yeah, I want to come in on Sundays or I want to have more time. Yes, sir.
Okay, so. One is, I mean, I had to politely ask you to try to speak up a little.
Oh, sorry, yes.
Cause. I'm deaf on this year and this one's having a hard time right now.
Okay.
Even on your side. Second is, so are you talking about the, the next strategic plan?
It's part of this strategic plan.
It's this.
No, no, so about the meeting coming up?
No. We don't have a meeting till Jan, June.
Okay.
We just had one.
But you're saying before June.
Before June. Like if you could do, do it by the May staff, uh, the May meeting.
What do I need to do?
Uh, just either me. April. And you won't see Karen normally, but just get to one of us that are on the committee. Just any idea you might have. You could just email it or text it or whatever, just so we get it on our list. Any ideas you might have.
And this is part of the strategic plan.
That's it. And if I could look and see which one it is.
So strategy four.
Nine o'clock, I think.
So originally we thought of Sunday hours, which, which is not, they're not here. Um, we thought of opening up a little earlier, so uh, staff are here at nine thirty. We would have to get them here probably at least fifteen minutes to twenty minutes ahead of that. So that would probably basis to nine. I can have to see how that would work. Because that still changes their hours for evening. There's limitations. So right now, um. Uh, Kim, who's head of circulation, she's helping with this. She's made a list of key lineups that are open on Sunday. She's worked on a survey for patrons as well as a questionnaire for libraries who are already open on Sundays. And other hours, you know, size some of these that they're doing. Uh, and now there, we are making a list of proposed staff needed if we were going to be open on Sundays. What does that mean? Could, if we were taking staff from another day to put them on a Sunday? What does that look like? Where does it short us? Will it short us? What does it look like if we opened early? So those are the kind of the behind the scenes that's going on now that. Uh, we plan to bring uh, some of that information. To the June even of strategic plan. By the way, this was originally in the building committee, but I took it off in the. So those are the kinds of things that we're thinking of. Just really, it's purely clarification right now, just to kind of get some ducks in a row. What's the overall going to look like? Uh, we're ready to commit to anything. Yeah, we just want to.
We just don't want to keep saying we'd like to see it and then not do anything.
Sure.
Oh, and it's, it's on our.
So, and I'm just grabbing the bylaws just to see if there's anything in here, but um. Is there a um. Like a mission statement for the strategic planning or is there something for a guideline that sets, you know, a paragraph that says, you know, this is. The goals in general?
Um, yeah, yeah, it's, is it all on the website? We did this, we, we had a professional company come in and help us last year. And we did a three year strategic plan. So all of the goals, I think all of the slides for the strategic plan are on the website.
Okay, so does strategic planning committee involve like, you know. The building itself? Cause you know, normally strategic planning is an overall comprehensive everything. Is it just?
No, this is overall.
Okay.
This is. How many, how many goals did we have? Five? Four? Yes. Um.
Two or strategies and underneath. Uh. Anywhere from two to. Or tactics.
And, and then, and we divided up with that strategic planning company that's out of Minnesota. We divided up what we really thought we could handle. We knew we couldn't do everything in one year. So what was really feasible for year one? Year two, year three.
Okay.
So it's truly a three year plan.
And so.
Last year was.
What year are we on? One?
Two, yeah. We're in year two.
We did.
Okay, so we're into two now.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
That helps.
Yeah, yeah. So if you look, the second column in, in this document that April gives us every month, it tells you what year. So it, and year two is highlighted. Those things are also in blue. So it tells us exactly, you know, we're in year two. Start dates in um, in the status. Usually there's updates when they've pissed, when they've had a strategic planning meeting.
Okay, so again, so then the ask before May was what?
Any ideas you would have where people could interact with the building and the collection more often or on hours we don't interact already?
I'll study it.
Yeah, it's just, you know, how could, how could someone be here and use things more often?
Okay.
And fit within the guidelines of what we have sat to.
Yeah.
For um, as a board and last, I don't know what was at the, it wasn't last. Year's budget for this year was the year before. We had asked April to ensure that we, because when we did our last millage. Not the last one, the one before that, that actually was for this building. It. We continually told the community that we were not going to be expanding staff to be able to do everything we want to do in this new building. So. We've tried to um, be very. You know, uh, April's done a great job on being effective about, cost effective about how we're using the staff. And um, one of the things that we asked April for twenty twenty four's budget is that we did not exceed um. In our expenses, our expenses sixty percent of. Um, that it, we would cap it at sixty percent for personnel for expenses. So we would have that forty, other forty percent to be specifically used for the programs and um. In the circulation that we need here in the library.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay.
And yes, some of those things, basically, um, just remind you all that what is in red is what is new. Uh, sometimes you will see red and black text. The black text stays if it's still. Unbroken, but still something that's relevant to that tactic that stays on. Sometimes it's taken off because it's, it's brandish, information brand. Um. I, I'm pleased to say, you know, as you know, we partnered with the White Lake Historical Society. Uh, they're having their monthly meetings here, which is fantastic. And they also are sponsoring programs. So they've got, we've got three programs for summer that they are putting on for us. Um. Even Hill Updates, World War Two Plain Fund, Lake Michigan, Ghost Towns of Orange County. So I can't tell you how pleased I am to have that partnership with the Historical Society. And I do want to draw attention to that and thank them for that. Um. Another thing I wanted to draw attention to. But I do draw your attention to the work. I take a look at it. Great information on what our staff are doing here. And this is part of their goal, so um. That's their goals. You tell them the strategic plan. We tell them the strategies they're going to work on each year. They build their goals off of that and then it feeds up and down. So they do the work, goes up. You come down, you tell them. That's how this works. So it's, it's great to have the guidance. Uh, you know, we all fail all our credit cards knowing what. It helps us work better.
And William, if you look at the, um, if you look at the second page under, um, we've got the strategy one. Says explore options for increased funding for the library and friends. But strategy two is develop this long range capital plan to prepare for needed upgrades. That's part of what's happening with building today. Because we did, we, we don't have that today, so that's really trying.
You know, that was the building committee. Uh. Funding that we would fit, they've come in together. You need to identify it in building. You, you know you need it because of the strategic plan. It drives an item on the building. The building does what it needs to do to find out how much it costs and stuff. And then you close it out under the um. Strategic plan one again. So everything feeds in and out of that strategic plan. So everybody's working towards the same goals.
Good.
All right. Okay. And now do you want to vote on the sick time policy? Did you guys come to present? Are you here to listen?
Are you?
Are you here to present today or?
No.
You didn't have anything? Okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're glad to have you back.
Well, I'm surprised that about me.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, but it's a good point, Roger.
Yeah, but be sure to tell us. I don't always remember to try to talk louder. My husband accuses me of being a load blocker. So we voted on the sixteen. We did?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't write it down.
We did.
Okay.
You got it, Karen?
Okay, well.
So. We had something tabled, by the way.
Next month. Yeah, I'll write it next month. I couldn't bring it this month because we didn't have all the votes for the cursive.
So just so you know, then we should have tabled it for two months. So somebody tabling, it either ends or you retable it. Yeah, we're going to retable it. The next, the next month. Even though gents here.
The cursive vote, I have to have that vote so I know what to put into the market.
Okay. So I'll just move the table again until next month. Somebody will second that.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
You get five yes votes. We're good. All right. I don't know why I wrote that note that.
Don't know what you're doing, Jen. Okay.
All right. So we. Took care of old business during our committee reports then?
Yes, we did.
So new business. Who is leading the discussion on the website vendor? Okay.
Okay, so um, website committee uh, reviewed about a dozen different vendors. Uh, and then they narrowed it down to our top three. We then uh, went to. One of those was, I would say it was our third choice. Uh, they were just not responsive. Um, they. Just did not. Didn't work out to get a presentation from them.
Yeah, despite a couple of opportunities.
Yes.
Like. Having been in sales, you shouldn't have to ask someone twice to present your business.
Right.
Do you want the dollars?
Practically begging. So, uh, we did narrow it down to our top two then, and that was Library Market. And Library Market was, um, they currently do our program each year. And Library Market was um, they currently do our program each year. So uh we were interested in that, and then also Walk One, uh which. Just recently did the Highland uh Library's website, they also did Brighton. And they're currently also working on Salem South Line. They also did the marketing and branding for the library network. Network told them um, and very great presentations from from both. We ultimately felt that Walk One was more personal to us and was really interested in helping. Us with what we. How they could best fit our needs and really took the time during that presentation. Library Markets felt a little bit more canned, I would say, um.
Hundred percent.
Uh just as if that was being given to everyone, it wasn't specifically our needs, it didn't, you know, walk on, you know, look at. As an example of the ideal lab page and say, wow, okay, there's a lot we can, we can do with that as an example. Again, trying to work with our timeline, we do have a relatively, for the industry, a relatively tight timeline. Uh Library Market was iffy, uh if they didn't, if we weren't able to hire them. Pretty much by the end of this month, then they weren't, they were again whether they were going to go to meet our deadline.
Yeah, part of that felt like an actual time pressure and a little part of it felt a little bit like a sales tactic.
Okay.
So which one turned you off more?
Turned me off more?
Yeah.
Library market.
The library, no, I meant their tactic, uh whether it was the sales or the.
The sales tactic is the one that got me.
Good got you.
Yeah, cuz I can recognize that a mile away.
Yeah.
So have you talked to Highland?
Yes. I had a friend, uh they talked to a friend, actually, I talked to a friend about this one last summer, she highly recommended, she loved working with them.
They really took the time to understand the language, despite not being librarians themselves. Like the library market people came from the library market.
I saw that.
Yeah, and and they have a lot of library experience in the market. Walk One is essentially an outsider to the library market, with the exception of the fact that they've worked with, what now, four, four or five libraries that they've done projects for. All the sites are absolutely fantastic, like there's no dead links, there's no flaws in what I could see in anything that was there. But what was really impressive to me about it was. Despite not being in the library market, they talked about patrons, they didn't talk about your users, they didn't talk about your clients. They talked about patrons, and it just rolled off his tongue, as though he were, had lived and breathed libraries the whole time, so, and they're local.
So, so I do have, uh uh are we open for discussion?
Sure.
Cuz I just have questions, and you guys probably have the answers, so so Highland really likes them.
Yes.
Um. I my, I, when I was reading through this, because this, some of the stuff is what I've did for years and years, you know, and. And dealt with software vendors. Um, there was a couple of things that stood out to me that I just sort of have questions on, and maybe I misunderstood. So um they have this this maintenance, this is nine hundred and fifty dollars a year, which is really nothing, but if. Does this website give us the opportunity for our in-house people to up, make updates to the website?
Walk One?
Yes. Okay, both of them allow that.
And I'll, I'll, let me pause you right there because I, and I know Eric can offer. The nice friends which which Eric did re- mention was that the CMS for Library Market is Drupal. And the CMS for Walk One is WordPress, and we usually have two stat norms that are familiar with WordPress.
Okay.
Drupal is known as being, if anybody has, I don't know, maybe has used it besides me. But it 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 tends to be fairly intensive, like ramp up to be able to be good with it.
Okay.
And so generally speaking, companies that use Drupal to develop their websites either have a specialist that does it in-house, that's their full-time thing. Or they farm it back out to the person that developed it to begin with.
And I did find that years ago, in my, in my research, years and years and years ago, and they had one person, and that's what he did. The other thing I'll call attention to is that um, uh Library Market uses their website, who's Pantheon. Um uh Walk One uses Hostinger, which is actually recommended by WordPress. So I thought that.
Okay, very good.
The one thing that I didn't notice, and and maybe we talked about this previously, but was. It's not specifically spelled out as hosting in the Walk One.
Gonna ask you that.
It doesn't say specifically anything about hosting, whereas the library market one does.
And I did have to reach out to them to ask.
Okay.
Okay, before I actually voted on this, I would like to know where it's hosted. And the other thing that I did not see in here is if um, so you know, because it'd be nice to know what, I'm assuming they're hosting in a cloud. But we don't know that, and um whoever they're hosting with, you know, we need to know what their um, their denial of service. Um support is. So. They, who they, who you, who do they use?
It's close.
Okay, but what denial of service comes with that?
So mentioned, he mentioned something about utilizing it, I don't see it in the proposal, but I'll have to look.
But I think that is something that we should have in this proposal, as well as if they um.
Amazon Web Services is what he said, which was the, the most robust. But I don't, I don't see it in the proposal, just at a glance. We should definitely ask about what, what hosting provider they use and what.
Those are really good, and the other thing with that software is if um they go out of business. It's not in their proposal anywhere, what happens to this website? Because most software companies, and they're truly not a software company, they're web developer. Most software companies, that software has to be retained in a um, I know, I can't think of the word I want to use. Oh, I can't think of it, there's a retention that it that um. So like when you're buying a house, escrow, it's usually, but I don't think that this, this is esc, I don't think that you can. As a website, it can be escrowed, but I don't know, and what happens if they go out of business, what happens to our website? And that, and that isn't in, so um, you guys did all, the the terms and conditions in. This library market was extensive, and I realize these people have extensive software backgrounds, where it. Ninety percent of what's in here that should be is um pretty standard in terms of conditions with a software company. Is not in um, in this Walk One, I'm not saying Walk One isn't the right thing to do. I'm just saying that there's a few things that are missing in their proposal that really need to be in a contract.
So April, you mentioned South Lion? Salem, South Lion? It's not, it's not the same as South Lion?
No.
Okay, that's, the only reason I was gonna ask you that, they, they actually use the Walk One, you said?
They're in the midst of it.
They're in the midst of it, because I know, so it's not the South Lion here in Oakland County?
Yeah.
It is, so they share a library with Salem?
I'm not sure how they're, I just know.
Okay, anyway, um I actually know some, so so do you know if it is that library is autonomous? Or if it's a part of the of the city?
It's a district, so it's got its own, it's its own. Not sure what you're.
City Council, or does it have its own? Okay, but are they, so Commerce is not like White Lake Commerce Library. It's different because the township controls it and points to board. So again, I'm asking, so what is the South Lion one, because I actually know somebody that uh sits on South Lion City Council. That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, no, the library board actually, they do.
Is like us.
Your district, so yes.
Okay.
Well, they're not, we're not a district, but they make their own decisions.
Okay.
So so Brighton's using this today, T L N, and Highland, that you know of, okay.
Yeah, and if you look at the Brighton site, in particular, the Highland site, they're, they're really good.
I have looked at the Highland site, and I have to say that I really, really like it. I looked at it a couple of months ago, and I was very impressed.
There's some, I, I, there's something like, I don't wanna say it's a. We should just say walk kind of thing, but it it's, there's something warm about it.
Yes. And it's, I thought it was very user-friendly, as we were talking about this before, um, I absolutely. Liked the Highland one a lot, I have not looked at Brighton's, um, and some of that one, and. Things that I looked at at this library market, I have to be honest, I looked at it and I thought, okay, your website, and then I went out and looked at some of their stuff. It looks busy.
So.
It is, it doesn't look super, yes, and I, and it was, it was too much information. Coming at you all at once, so I actually like what they have to offer, I just felt like there's some things that are missing in this proposal that should be in a contract, and we should understand. Well, did you, I mean, I'm looking for how, you know, who's their, who's their cloud provider?
They're.
Who's their cloud provider?
That, that's what I.
That's why I said.
It, and is it in, I didn't.
H O S T I N G.
Okay, I'm sorry, where, where, and where was, and where is that in this proposal?
Dan, I have, I can email him.
What was the wish answer?
I wanna know who their cloud provider is, and um and how their D D O S. Their denial of service. Um, is protected.
You mentioned at some point, I'll, I'd like to like to get confirmation on it, but I just almost certainly said something about AWS. Which could be the.
And and April, what'd you say the name of that company was? It was their cloud provider, cuz it's not anything I've heard of.
H O S T I N G R.
But she says that was the host. And you're saying cloud provider, I don't know if those are.
It's not.
Okay, so you're looking.
I wanna know, so you, so you say there, there, this is, this hosting is doing their web hosting.
Correct. WordPress is the content.
But it it's gotta be sitting on a cloud someplace, and I think this.
Hosting or cloud hosting?
Okay, thank you, I've not heard of them.
WordPress um recommends them, they're one of the ones they recommend.
I'll go out and look at it. It needs to be part of our contract, that we understand where we're being hosted, and if we're um, and if they go out of business. How do we obtain our website? Usually, things like this are set, are set in the escrow account. And I'm sure that they have that information. And it looked like both of them were pretty comparable in price. So if we need their help though. We pay, we pay them by the hour. The other thing that I just wasn't super crazy about was their, their um. Was their help desk. So say, you know, um each department's working on something in their website, and they wanna update like children's or whatever, right? Um. So, because this is only four hours of support per month, right? Updates and significant changes, I don't really understand exactly what that means. And what, you know, if we had something that we needed to do an upgrade on, is that, I'm assuming that that's gonna take another proposal. Or project proposal from them.
Hosting, by the way, uses CloudFlare DNS.
Thank you.
Protection.
Okay. Okay.
It's all their plans included, even their lowest plan includes Cloud.
Okay, very good.
So there's unlimited content updates, so if we need anything changes like that, so that's all taken care of, and not concerned about that. Um they. Backup security malware. We're just like updating, updating maintenance, content changes, so like updates, plugin maintenance and content changes. Uh SEO analytics, auditing. It's not gonna be part of those, the four hours will be in addition. But it's specific things that we needed, I wouldn't, I'm not, that's all ready for you about in that. That makes sense, so if we had something more serious we needed to change, that would be part of that for hours.
Okay.
Per month.
What's our timeline? What do, what are you actually looking for timelines?
Actually, we. Up and running by October first. So it.
And because our current site is going to go down? Okay.
So. You can see here on Walk One. That we should be able to get done by mid-September with an October first launch date, the Library Market. You have a paragraph, which is a little tighter. But they said that you need to get them a notice by the end of the month, correct?
By end of this month?
I don't have a problem with this, Eric, after you've told me what Hostinger says. My only, my only really concern is what happens to the website if they go out of business.
Yeah, and my only question is, is there additional charge for hosting?
Um, well.
It wasn't specified, I don't think.
It, well, what hosting SSL renewal is eighty-five dollars.
Does it have it in it?
Yes, that's right here.
Let's go to work.
Yes, it is in the, in the setup and implementation.
Okay.
And then um.
Yeah, yep, sorry.
So I, and then the security malware protection's a hundred and ninety-five, and the website backup is a hundred and fifteen a year. So, you know, I mean, to me, is a, is a um, is a, is somebody that did this kind of things, I'd like to know, okay. What's your turnaround if our web, if something happens to our website? And the backup solution is only a hundred and fifteen dollars a year, which is very, very expensive, what's their turnaround time to bring us back up? These are just, I, you know, these are just questions I would like to personally know, is um, so, you know, it's um. We have some malfeasance in our website, and we need to roll back to, you know, the last version before that. How long, what's their turnaround time for, for an emergency like that?
It's a good question.
Because a lot of people will say they have website, and they have, they have backup, and I'm going through this right now, as April knows. We're going through this right now with them, um with the Therapy Dog International, and um they thought they had. Backup in, they've been down for four months. As they're, as they're rebuilding things. Yes, so it's, it, it's just little things like that, it's important. You know, because one of the things we don't want is a website that we have, we say, oh, um, there's a problem with getting the backups, and when we, we can't bring our. Website back up for three or four days, right? So, and that was what I was looking for too, is what, what are their um hours, you know, if we, if we haven't, what they call an E one. Wha- what kind of hours are accessible for us, right? And I didn't really see that in here. And it says twenty-four hour malware and vul- vulnerability scanning, but that's not. What are their hours of support when we have an issue? So anyway, I, like I said, I really like Highlands, I thought the Highlands looked great, um. It'd be interesting to know, you know, what the response time is when there's an issue, and what, and Highland might know that.
Yeah, Brenda said she's had no problems with them, she's dealt with them for, obviously. Since last. Well, I talked about it last summer, so. She said that they were great, they gave plenty of time uh during the planning and uh building time for. The sandbox, if you will, so she had plenty of time to learn it and get used to it. She hasn't.
Okay.
Um, April, how, how long have they been in business? All right, was it in there?
So this, this.
Okay, so going on ten years? Okay. I mean, the fact that you said that the last company's retiring. So, first thing, what is this, how long, how long is this company's gonna be around, excuse me? And then, you know, like, how long are you looking for this website to be something, somebody, one company's gonna service? Maintain service for us, right, a long time. So hopefully they, they have another, you know, at least twenty years, I mean, that's what you're. Thanks.
Anybody else have questions? Besides Big Mom?
Oh, no.
No? Okay.
Do we need to take a vote? That's the next question.
I believe we have some questions.
Yeah, yeah, questions, right?
I do have questions, but I also feel like. This, well, if you look at this proposal is only due, this proposal expires.
April eighth.
Yes, they don't they don't even give us thirty days for a proposal, which is unusual.
Which one is that?
Um, block one, and the proposal is only valid to April eighth.
There, so they basically gave.
And then like in in library website, their proposal is valid for ninety days, which is very.
Right, I I can give you a. A feedback on that from companies working for small with smaller companies too, is that first of all, those those days don't mean anything.
Yeah.
Because we can certainly say, well, it's now a month later than what you said. Can we still get it? And if they want the business, they'll they'll give it to you. Um, but also. That part of the business, I think he's a little bit greener on. Like hasn't hasn't this you walk one is obviously just by the this is my gut. It's not anything I know factually. Walk ones are, I'm sorry. Library Market has been burned legally before. You can tell by the way they read the proposal. They've got indemnification like crazy. So. Um. It's it it seems much more standard in terms of their approach. They've they've gone through this thing of fine toothed cop walk one a little less so. But it's it. In my mind, it's a trade-off, like.
Right, yeah, and and you know, I I do have confidence in T L N. There there's just, you know, there's some basic questions that I have about. Their reachability to, you know.
So the the alumni I see is. Um, it's March. And so, you know, Monday is April. I mean. Right, Monday becomes a new month, and then we have seven days after that. According to them.
Well, they they stretch it, but but are we going to be.
But you want to do it before the next week? So have you guys done polling? You guys done phone polling? Does it comply with our, well, we have to follow the rules we have to follow with the. Public entity.
I'm not sure what you're asking.
Okay, so you can poll the board. You could actually find out some answers. All of us could get the answer to that, and then you could just do a. Vote, right? Because once we're all on. Once six of us are in. A group chat. Where it's we now have a quorum and now we can actually do business.
We we can't do a group chat.
Well, you know what I'm saying? What I'm trying to say is, how do you do business outside of this room?
We have to have another meeting.
If you have a forum. So you have to call special meeting.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
And and it has to be an in-person meeting.
It has to be.
Because of the public policy things, okay? You know, I'm agreeing on that, so that's why I have to ask this question.
No, we can't do that. That's why when we have these subcommittees, um, you know, we don't have our own forum in those subcommittees.
Right, no, no, I agree. I understand that.
Because we need to link those by those.
But once you do in any setting. You now have a quorum, so you actually have a legal place to have a meeting. Or do all our meetings have to be in.
Has to be in person here.
So we can't have a a meeting outside of here together?
No, we cannot.
Even with everybody present?
No.
You did a field day. You can't do it.
Can't you? We cannot.
The building's not here. What do you do?
You you um, well.
Not everything's.
During COVID, we were allowed to do Zoom.
You're allowed to do Zoom.
We were because the township was.
Because township was.
Enabled it.
Yes, and only because of that.
And then, once they got rid of that privilege, then we couldn't do it anymore either.
There are specific, if you look, um, I have open meeting acts, Open Meetings Act here. There are specific situations where. You know, you can be in a place together and have a forum, but you cannot talk about library business. If you're going to talk about library business, then you have to have a meeting.
Right.
You have to give notes.
Anybody can go.
So even like specifically, we've done field trips. Um, and we've made sure that when we've done those to like library, like the MLA, when we went to those. Um, we didn't take a form with us. So MLA offered um some one-day classes for trustees. And they offered them in various different places throughout the state, and um we never had more than three people go at once.
Okay.
Just so that we don't have that. Implication that we might be making decisions as a board outside of this meeting.
I'm just trying to give us an option so that before the eighth.
We would have to call a meeting and post it.
So so when we call special meetings, how does the public get notified?
Hi, an agenda is created, the agenda goes on the website, goes on our board out here, same way we.
But that qualifies. You don't have to have a, there's no timeframe of notice.
Well, just because as soon as we know the date, we put it out there.
So if it if the special meeting was two days from now, as long as you put it on the website, you put it on the board, it's good? Really? Okay.
I I I'm willing if if. If the committee is. Comfortable with the risk. As you know, because we do have some risk just because we have someone knows. I mean, if the committee's. Comfortable with that risk, I'm comfortable with taking a vote.
Link to your motion that. Sort of indicates we're pending responses to those particular questions.
Well, my concern is is that if we wait for yet another month. That um you're going to miss your deadline for a new website.
Okay, I'd like to ask to the the more of a tactical question. So whoever sounds like you two are most. You know, and um experienced in this, so um. See, that makes April, May, June, July, August. September, right, that's that's. Next month. They need six months to get this ready to roll out. Is that reasonable? Or is that a long period of time?
No, it's reasonable. I think it's perfectly reasonable.
So. Delaying is going to push against that.
Yeah, because a big a big part of it too is that they have to wait on user acceptance testing from us or from whoever on our group is going to actually look at it.
Right.
So and then they they have to take anything that we give back to them and say, this doesn't work. This doesn't work right. This isn't the way we wanted it and fix that. So there's a little, there's a lot of back and forth.
I I would think that they probably won't even have a beta for three months. And then it's going to be back and forth.
Yeah. Because the first, my guess is that one of the first things they would try to do is migrate some of the content to see how easy it is to update it. Uh, and then from there, then they evaluate what didn't come over in the migration. And then. Update those things and. It's a grind.
Something about having been able to have the sandbox open pretty quick with at least the structural. Of what we're looking at, and then we can go from there, you know, page by page. Uh, our website committee, the staff size has already been looking at all the pages, all the changes they want to make. They liked to tell me, we did meet with block one, we were able to say, well, look at this page, we want to change that, we want that off of there, we want this. Um, so we're already working on our end of things. So whoever is chosen. Whatever vendor is chosen, we're ready to. Ready to roll.
Well, I asked all these questions because um. I'm comfortable with supporting people that understand this and voting that way, all right? Because you're not comfortable. I'm not comfortable voting that way, and I'm on the edge right now of.
Well, I'm on the edge too because of just, I I my concern is, my concerns are. If you have a problem with the website. Nothing in this proposal says, how reactive are they? That is a big concern for me. If that website goes down. What's their E one policy to get you back up and what kind of timeframe?
Yeah, they need some sort of an SLA, service level agreement.
And I don't see that SLA in here.
Yeah, I don't either.
So those, and and really, neither one of them, and more so in the in the library one, but it it that's my concern is ongoing. Like I said, I like what I've seen from Highland. I think they did a fabulous job. But what kind of support are we going to get? And what's going to happen? If they do go out of business? How do we maintain our, how do we obtain the code for our website?
Do we have a specific list of answers that we need? That. April, you can ask.
I'm going to put a request microphone.
To do that? And then maybe and then if we get them, then. Do we approve so-and-so as the. Vendor, given we get good answers to these questions?
I don't think we could, I think we could.
Yes.
They don't.
You know. Can we do that?
But I don't want to undo it.
What'd you say, Becky?
A conditional vote, like you vote, yeah, on block one.
This one's seventeen.
Also, does.
Like.
This one's a little bit more.
I bet there's that there's a solution for it. They got a business and that.
You get served a service level agreement.
That it's.
Yeah, yeah. I like the other ones.
I mean, I would do that if that's okay.
Say that again, Tim?
Can we just conditionally approve so-and-so as the vendor, given we get adequate. Answers to question X, Y, and Z. And that um Gwen and Eric will review the answers and, you know, hold the approval for the remaining board members.
They're going to say they can't resend our votes. If they decide. And if we're going to vote blanket.
Yeah, it'd have to be like a.
I'm I'm okay with that. But I prefer not.
So the question.
I don't care, but we've been talking about this since twenty-eight. We know Gwen's got issues. Eric's got issues. They're very specific issues. And if he will answer those questions and you guys are okay with those answers. I'm okay with moving on your expertise and him asking questions out of it. Now, if that's not a legal way to do it, uh, we can have a special meeting. Haven't, we've done that before. So, but. You know. I don't know that we can add too much more to it.
Have you done this before? Have you done this scenario situation before?
I think we've done something similar, like when we. Uh, we approve of the these renewing these. CDs at such and such rate. You know.
Conditional upon getting the rate?
Yeah. Like it won't go less than four percent or whatever. We've done something. Like that on. Things before. I just, I don't um. Sounds like the level of your uncomfortability is high enough. That you want these answers before.
I do, but here's the but here's the dilemma we have then, too, is if we don't, we lose our website as of October first. Do we lose it or we just lose our support of it?
Well, we have it. Um, we have saved every single page. So I mean, worst case scenario, we had to put it on ourselves. I suppose with it, it looked awful, but.
So, okay, my question then, it it so this our current website. We, I don't have any idea where it's hosted. What happens to that hosting October first?
So no code or assets.
Do we do content could change right now on our current?
And that's my.
So our people are able to. Change content. Okay, so is WordPress also?
No, it's um.
It's a proprietary, I remember that, but I don't what.
My concern, yeah, my concern, William, is October first, we don't have a website because the hosting will be gone.
No, right, so. Both things are a problem, so we don't have a website um to. That's up and running, right? Because and one goes down and we don't have one to replace it with. How how can we maintain what we got for a few days, weeks, whatever?
Well, he gave it.
Possible.
He gave us a notification that's almost a year long.
Okay, you've known this for a year.
It will probably be a year when he.
Put it into the budget, so I knew about it last fall.
Yes.
Okay.
Right, so we've known. And so, you know, it's taken some time to figure out which one, like they said, they they looked at twelve vendors.
Well, all I have to do is be convinced that. You guys will make a good decision for my vote. And I'll vote accordingly now, but if you don't feel comfortable, you're making me not.
Well, I have a procedural question about like, is it possible to say, just I'm I'm doing hypothetical here, but like, we approve this based upon satisfactory written answers to. Two of the members of the board in writing. By X date. Is that is that a conditional that can be, that can legally be voted on in the past?
I don't know. Votes a vote. Once the vote's taken, it's done. So.
But but here's the other thing, I I guess we, if if we vote on it tonight, because we know we need a website in this, and they don't have an SLA. A service level agreement that includes. An an E one, which is an emergency, you know, a drop dead emergency is E one. That SLA really should have E one, E two, E three, you know, how long it takes for them to respond to those.
Are those different kinds of failures?
It's it's different kinds of priority. So like an E one, would we, our website's completely done. Okay, and E two is, you know, um, maybe we need a um. Part of our website's done and we need a backup.
So it's it's like. Out, broken. And damaged.
Okay.
Or sort of we can think of it that way.
Yeah, so um. And um. Where do we retain, you know, do we have any rights? To that website if they go out of business? Right, those are my concerns. Um, those are my concerns with any vendor that we would use, right? Um. And I I think that maybe we can take a vote tonight and um if for some reason, those are not satisfactory. April does not have to sign that agreement with them. And she can come back to the board and we can vote again next month on a different vendor.
We can essentially resend our.
Yes, we could, we could. We have definitely come back at a month later on things and and voted or two months later and voted.
To reverse it.
To reverse, yes.
Based on. Because in theory, we could vote yes, and you follow through on that, and then we can't do anything about it because you followed through on what we told you to do. But if you dragged your feet. We can't make you. Sign it. Until we make you sign it.
So what do you have to have? What do they have to have by the thirty first? Sign contract?
Well, that's that's the one that we're not sure we want to use.
Right.
That the one that we don't want to use. Is the one who wants it by the end of the.
Yeah, I'm only talking about walk one.
Yeah, starting on Thursday by April eighth.
By April eighth.
Yeah.
So we have time.
Let me let me ask a question as long as we're having this discussion. Is there anyone that has hesitation about walk one over library market on the group? No judgment?
No. Not from what I saw, although I didn't go to the website like Gwen did. I just happened to see Highlands. I I went to Highlands before.
Doug in Ohio.
Yeah.
Including, I looked to see if Salem South Line was up yet. It's still listed as the old hoster, so. But we know that they're in process. So.
Who was it?
It was the Salem South Line.
Oh, okay.
They're not, they're not done yet.
Okay.
They're like in the midst of migration.
Which is a kind of like a cool thing, because you could actually reach out to somebody that's in development right now and say, how's it going?
Do you think that Salem South Washington?
You know, I mean, conversant one that's got. Because that's what we're going to be in this development.
Yes, right.
Yeah.
So six months, right?
So they're they're. And the other two, Brighton and here are like, hey, we love it, right? I mean, it's a good decision.
Right, right.
We're not going to know until we get in.
It just didn't seem like we were getting anywhere with the discussion. We could sit here till nine thirty and talk about.
Want to?
Yeah.
I'm I'm open.
No, I I'm just like, what can we do to move this forward?
Yeah.
It's all, it's all.
Well, we could apply Robert's rules, and we ended a long time ago after everybody spoke twice. But we didn't because it's an actual important thing.
Speak twice.
It's important.
Yeah.
What's that?
I didn't see the speak twice thing, but I did know if you don't vote, you got to table.
No, it's not a rule in the Robert's rules, but you would you would say that we only allow twice. We only allow three times.
Okay.
There's not a lot.
Yeah. No, I did, I did see where they said if you don't vote on something, you got to table it. To another meeting. You can't leave it.
Anything tabled.
Not being voted.
Dies at the end of the meeting unless you have a specific specific date and time to bring it back up off the table.
Uh huh.
That's.
Okay.
But. Um. Again, I'll I'll just reiterate, I I I'm confident with whatever Gwen and.
Yes, I know that you guys.
Eric decide.
I would agree.
Um. But it's all contingent on you.
Yeah. I think.
From what I understand.
I don't know if that's what you're writing down right now, Gwen, but I was thinking, we have at least two questions that we need answers to. Do we have any other questions that anyone else has that we want to ask of them before?
No, I just want to know that you guys get the information you feel comfortable with.
I'm learning WordPress right now. Only that not for this kind of that higher level stuff, lower level.
Seventeen thousand dollars is the mark. Hmm, you get it? If you want to do it, it's under, you got to be kind of committed to your seventeen.
Didn't you write them down?
Why, what? Very specifically. What it is. You need to know what you're looking at. I just want to make sure I get the wording exactly right. They answer so that we get the exact. Yes or no?
That isn't a yes or no.
Yeah.
Questions.
Or what? The full answer, so I just, that's what I'm saying. I want to make sure that it's it's a specific.
So let's wordsmith this rather quickly then. So we want to know in writing what their support hours they're committing to are. And their response time.
I'm writing it right now. We want the we want their support hour and response time. It's their SLA agreement, their service level agreement, it's standard. Doc works.
Yep.
So we want that, and we want to know, um, um, if the end of business for walk one.
Yeah, the business should be dissolved or.
How does the library retain their website?
And by website, we mean the, the code as well as any assets.
Service level agreement, what was the specific question that I want?
Uh, if we want to see a contract, we want to see what their service level agreement is in writing.
Right, including support hours, response time.
Yeah, so I'm sending this to you right now. And, um, I, the other thing that I didn't see in here is, um. If we decided, either party decided to terminate the contract, what are the, what are the notification times?
Yeah, notification times is good, yeah, and then also ownership or retention of code and assets.
Yeah, I.
Those words specifically, yeah. Oh, and there is one more, other one, I hadn't thought of this. That, um, we want to make sure that we retain all rights to photographs and other assets.
Um, one of them said we didn't. One of these two, yes, one of them said, is, is that, um, I think it was library web, the library market. Said that they have rights to everything that we put up there.
Now, see, I don't mind someone having rights to republish or use in marketing. I don't have an issue with that. I have an issue with them being able to get rid of it. So if we have a photo of something that they have on their site, we don't have access to it any longer. I don't want someone to basically say, oh, you don't have, that's not your photo. That's my concern that.
Okay, Richard, say that again, because I'm putting this in, in this note to April.
Um, ownership. And rights to. Content and assets. That the library would want to retain those, I said that backwards, but the library would want, we want to retain.
Retain all rights of ownership of.
Ownership of content and assets.
Thank you.
Yeah. That's the only red flag, but, and, and I, again, I, this is one of those things that I'm, I'm sure. Which, if I have to guess what answers really, we're going to get back on this, not to belabor this, but if I had to guess what answers we're going to get back on this. Is support hours is the moment we get a call, we respond. And that, of course, you retain all the rights to all these things.
Because some, some companies are very good at development and they're very terrible at support.
Right. Yeah.
We're waiting, let me out.
Yes, we were.
Yes, aside.
I believe Gwen has typed up the, or is typing out.
Okay, so.
Specific question.
So, yeah, April, um, somebody needs to fix the garbage can in the men's room? Like you push foot on it and it opens about that far?
Yeah, what happens when Kenny's who changes the bag, he still don't understand the concept that that opens where apart, that can snap down. And so then if, that's what happens.
Okay. Anyway, so. Important thing about man life is, I see things that I really wish I didn't see. Oh, April, I have three copies of my laws, is that like upon or? Yes, yes.
I asked, I asked, I had one, I, I, he had any, he said he had one and is mine still in there?
Somebody not have?
Yeah, I have mine.
What are we talking about? Yeah.
So I got to use the term insolvency of business.
That's a good. I'd say insolvency or closure. They don't know. The other thing is I want not only the answers to this, but I want the paper trail that comes with the answers.
See what I mean about the man?
Lawsuit protected.
Just.
There you go.
Need to be so anal retentive.
No, and I'm sorry, you want a paper trail?
Yeah, I was just saying like, with these questions, we not only want satisfactory answers to questions, but also we want them documented so that if we need to use them. You know, effectively contracts, a contract, but any written communications also are contractual.
We're essentially making a ten to twenty year investment in this company.
Yes.
So, I mean, it's really important.
We really want these to see these in a new and updated.
They, they didn't, they didn't finish the proposal.
Right.
Really is, they need to add.
Okay, that's, that's the, and it's, and they probably have it, they didn't. They just didn't provide it.
Or thought it was necessary for this. Um. Oh, that might be a good way to, to not worry about the timeframe. Because it's kind of incomplete, but you're leaning, we're leaning towards them. So, when you ask them for information, it would be, if I was making the call, I would be okay, so listen here, you're a little short on this. And because we may be a little short on time, we're going to work, we're both going to work at agreeing that, you know, time's not an issue. And we're going to make a decision that's probably in your favor. I mean, it's, when I saw my, my job. That, so. Everything's a negotiation in life.
So, do we want to leave it? Thoughts?
Don't be though.
That's an important decision.
I would prefer to come back for a, a separate meeting until.
I would not do next Wednesday. Just so anybody knows, I can't do any Wednesdays until our next meeting.
Doesn't have to be on a Wednesday.
Yeah, yeah, just. Straight up.
Yeah, even if it's a matter of a fifteen minute meeting.
For sure.
Absolutely.
Yes, we've done it before.
Rubber stamp.
We have done it before. And I don't want to be such a stickler, but I'm just.
I, I don't understand it's, it's.
And Eric, if I didn't get this right, you can, you can edit it. I sent it to you and it didn't.
So what does the township have, other than ordinances?
Just let me answer that, can we, if you want to do another meeting, can we just quickly?
Sure.
See what's available.
Yeah. Yeah, honestly, if you got answers. You know, send it, well. I don't know if you'd have them tomorrow and send back out to us. So Wednesdays are off the table.
I've emailed him about three times in the last two days and he's gotten back to me for each one.
I mean, I think that we would like to meet next week and I, I'd make myself available for any of them.
I cannot do, I cannot do Wednesday until our next board meeting, so any other day is kind of good, I guess.
I'm available tomorrow, Friday, Monday night.
Good for me.
Monday's not good for you, okay.
So Tuesday evening is, this room's open.
Okay.
Is that the first?
Thursday, like. What's Thursday, Thursday's my best day next week, just as a, Tuesday's my.
What day is Thursday?
Third.
Third.
My best day.
Is also available.
Okay.
Uh, Thursday's available for me.
Yes.
That would get them time to get those answers back and to you to send out to the teams.
A week.
Yeah. Okay.
How many is it, four hundred and four?
Stay or the third?
Two thirds, our quorum is two thirds.
We had enough, enough if you make Thursday, third?
Two here that can.
Is it like six thirty again or?
We can do, um, what works for, do you want to do the same time?
You have to do like six thirty, I mean, I can do it probably early.
I could do earlier, later, it doesn't matter to me.
Yeah, what works for you? Becky, what works for you?
Uh, I guess how early are we thinking? During the day or within the evening?
I could, I could do any.
Earlier evening than six, six forty five.
I could do anytime after four thirty.
Um. Probably can't do until like, I says, probably not until like five thirty.
Okay, that's good by me.
Setting the room up would be, is the earliest, so yeah, is the earliest I could do, so do you want to do five thirty?
Works for me.
That's probably the soonest I could be here with getting my husband to the kids and stuff like that, so.
Does six make it easier?
What time?
I mean, I think five thirty should be fine. Five thirty is easier.
It only takes four of us to vote, who can't write, I mean, so.
It's four, says four, that's if you do five thirty.
Started on time.
Okay, thank you. I ju- I just think we need to have those answers.
I think it's a good decision.
Yeah. I think it's a good call.
Yep.
It's, it's the most secure, I mean, we can, we can make conjectures all night long, but I think, right, get solid answer, that's a good way.
So, we're going to make this official or?
I make a motion that we have, um, that we table this and for a separate meeting on Thursday, April third at five thirty.
A second that.
For the website vendor discussion.
Yes.
I did.
She called for the vote?
Oh, I, yes.
I, I.
Five years votes. William, you are, yes, right?
For me?
I was, I was looking down.
He raises his hand.
Yeah, 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 I'm good.
Okay.
Sorry to me speak on your behalf.
Okay, okay, I think the last thing we have is the holiday update.
I had no problems with it.
Okay.
No, just, you know, it's the same holidays, the, you know, we just picked that, that they were allowed to do a floating holiday, which makes a lot of sense. And I think it, the, the date of December twenty sixth really makes a lot of sense. Because then they'll have the twenty fifth, twenty sixth, twenty seventh, twenty, twenty fifth, this must be a Friday, twenty sixth. Twenty seventh, that'd be a three day holiday, right?
Yeah.
On Christmas Eve, four days. Yes, it'll, that will be nice. Yeah, I can't imagine.
It's the one that made the most sense.
Yes. Who wants to come in one day?
Yeah.
I don't get right. So, and being that it's. Well, the day after Christmas, I don't look for a lot of people coming in, uh, to the library the day after Christmas, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. So has everybody looked at this?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the, um, holidays updates.
For twenty twenty six.
Twenty twenty six.
A second.
Yeah, and Eric's seconding?
Yeah, I second.
Okay, all in favor?
Alright.
I.
I. Okay, five years votes.
Uh, no, we tabled the, we tabled the other thing.
And that's, no announcement, so I motion to adjourn.
Second.
Everybody's raising their. Eight thirty three P M.